Good evening. The Oyster River School Board is now in session. We will begin this evening with comments by visitors. I invite you to the podium if you could state your name and town you live in.
A drama teacher and director, Meredith Freeman-Caple. Fourteen actors will be competing against other New Hampshire high schools for the chance to move on to the one-act state competition. The name of the one-act play being presented is Check Please.
Dating can be hard, especially when your date happens to be a raging kleptomaniac, or your grandmother's bridge partner, or a mime.
Check Please follows a series of blind dinner dates that couldn't get any worse, until they do. Could there possibly be a light at the end of the tunnel?
The school is being given the privilege of a viewing of the one-act on the fifteenth of March. That evening, the drama club is hosting a dessert and performance night so that the families of the cast, as well as the public, can attend. We invite you all to come enjoy a sweet dessert and an even sweeter laughter.
The cast then goes to Merrimack High School to compete on the seventeenth. Wish us luck, and again, thank you for your continued support.
What time on the fifteenth will the play?
Dessert starts at six-thirty, and the play starts at seven.
Wonderful, great. Six-thirty and then seven. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that will be here at the high school?
Yes.
Fabulous.
Thanks.
Thanks. And good luck.
Thank you.
Are there other comments by visitors this evening? Evening.
I'm John Parsons from Durham. I teach at the middle school. I coach track and cross-country there. I'm also a member of Friends of Oyster River Track. There was some uninformed speculation about warrant Article III presented by at least one school board candidate last week during the forum, and I'm here to try to correct for the board and the public a mistaken impression that was probably left in the minds of many watchers. To folks driving by the UNH fieldhouse, it appears that UNH has many fields and that Oyster River should be able to arrange something with the university for extensive use of their track and field facilities. If UNH were the size of a small, of a high school or a small college, that might work, but it's not. UNH has a large number of their own teams, intercollegiate, excuse me, intramural and club sports, that already put huge demands on the space UNH has available. Oyster River coaches and athletic directors have tried for years to schedule our teams on UNH track and field facilities with very limited success. UNH teams are using their properties at the same times we would like to use them, and beyond that, too. A good example is my own experience as the middle school coach who interacts with the UNH athletic department to schedule our use of their track. For at least ten years, I have arranged what time we can on the UNH track. Most of the limited time they can offer us is after their teams are finished for the day, which means we ask middle school kids to start their practice at six-fifteen in the evening. We would rather have them home, eating supper, doing homework, and otherwise spending time with families. However, if we don't use the track from six-fifteen to eight PM, we have to run on pavement, which presents major safety issues. It also means that we limit the number of events kids can participate in because the equipment is just not available. Try doing the high jump, long jumper hurdles on asphalt. What limited time we do get is at the discretion of UNH, which of course is not focused on what is best for middle school or high school kids. The ORYA track program runs there in the evening, too. Do we really want five-year-olds to practice, then? What limited time we do get also costs us money. If it were possible to schedule all the time we need on the UNH track, which we can't, it would cost us between seven thousand and eight thousand dollars a year just for the track. That doesn't count using their fields. It is not cost-effective to be sending UNH that money when it could go toward our own facilities, which the, we could then use at times which are developmentally appropriate for our kids. UNH doesn't have time and space for their own athletic programs, never mind ours. Let's put that in the rest right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any further comments from visitors? Okay. Then comments by board members? David?
I would like to answer some other questions that have come up, that I've received, dealing with warrant Article III. Thanks, Peter. One is, why do we need the off-site fields? Why, particularly, why do we need the baseball and softball field to move off-site, and whether there's any space onsite for those fields? And the answer, simple answer to that is no. The Athletic Fields Master Plan has identified the need for nine additional fields, four, five rectangular fields, two baseball and two softball. There's no space on either the high school or the middle school, even if you cut down all the trees, to put another field in, let alone nine fields. When we decided to renovate this high school in place, we made the same decision to eventually have off-site fields, and the school boards for the past decade have been looking for off-site fields. In the past three years, we've had three different possibilities that have all fallen through, and we will continue to look for off-site fields. It's not uncommon to have off-site fields, and the operational cost is very manageable. So that's why we are moving toward off-site fields, is because it's the only practical solution we have. John Parsons already addressed the question of UNH. I would like to point out that the, the intramural teams there play until one o'clock in the morning because they, they don't have enough fields for their use. It just simply won't work for us to move there, either. Another question that's come up is how many baseball and softball fields will we have in the end? The base, number of baseball fields and softball fields will increase by one each, so we currently have two softball, one baseball, so we'll have a total of two baseball and three softball when we're done. However, the question's really not merely how many diamonds you can count, but how much those fields can be used. The overlap between the baseball field and the two rectangular fields that are currently used for lacrosse in that season will be greater. Basically, the track will overlay where the current baseball home plate is, to give you a sense of what, how that space is being compacted a little bit. It's going to be flipped. It will be roughly about the same size, but there's less space. There's going to be more overlap, so it's going to be harder to schedule lacrosse and baseball at the same time, which is why we need to have the off-site fields. So the total number of fields will increase, but the amount of usable field time onsite will diminish because of the scheduling conflicts. If anybody has any other questions about this, feel free to call me or to send email. You can send email to orcsb@orcdd.org, or you can even just call me at home at 659-0976, and I'd be happy to answer your questions for Article III. Thanks.
And additionally, there is information on the district website for people to go to, to read further. Any other comments by board members? I would like to just take a minute to thank Peter CPO for his time on the board. Peter, this is just a little token of appreciation. It's been really nice serving with you, and I know, because I've had a front-row seat, that you've brought a lot to this board, particularly in bringing some of your expertise that you use out in the world have helped us to look particularly at our facilities and some of the difficult decisions that we've had to make that are actually showing up on warrant articles this year. So thank you. You'll be missed, and I do understand you're not going too far, and you have invited us to call on you, so we're happy to have you as a, moving into the status of volunteer. But thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
I also just wanted to mention that on Monday, I went to the legislative hearing on adequacy in Dover, and I have some materials that I will ask Collette to put together. I thought, there, the committee is receiving input over the next month or so, which means that there's plenty of time if we, as a board, want to collectively or individually send input to the committee. One of the documents that they gave me shows that there are currently ten different versions of bills that are being considered, so I thought I would maybe make that. You could just look at them, and we might, had a future agenda, decide whether we want to discuss, if there's some response we'd like to have as a board or not. In the meantime, I, the session was taped, and it will be shown on New Hampshire Public Television. I'm not sure when, when the viewing is going to be, but it was a relatively short meeting. I think there were, it was an hour and a half total, probably seventy minutes of that was made up of comments from people who had come, and there really was a very interesting range of, of comments as to what we might think of in terms of adequacy. And I'll, I'll put together some notes on that, too, when you, when I Xerox the other things for you. Any other comments? Okay, so let's move on to our preliminary actions. Are there any announcements this evening? Election Day, March thirteenth. We encourage people to go out and vote. Anything else? Correspondence? Commendations? We don't have minutes to approve. I'm assuming we'll see those at our next meeting, probably. We've kind of had a quick turnaround on minutes. And manifest? Have those made it?
Yes.
Okay, we're all set. So, moving on to board activity, I believe our first item will actually, will strike that until next meeting, signing a code of ethics. We usually do that with the new board. Are there any committee reports? No committee reports. Our student senator isn't here, so let's move on to superintendent evaluation process. At our last meeting, we agreed that Kim would sit on the subcommittee with David and I, and we will, depending on the outcome of a, a proposal that I think Superintendent Coulter's going to make later, we've kind of tentatively set a date for next week to meet and work. But the process, as it currently stands, goes like this. Howard will provide a self-assessment to the subcommittee by May fifteenth. This will be a narrative that he'll put together, and that will come to the subcommittee. In the meantime, or sort of at around that same time, the subcommittee will be gathering input from central and building administrators. And this is a step that Superintendent Coulter has actually recommended. It was not something that we've done in the near future, but he really is inviting the input from those people who work closely with him, and I think it, it's really a fabulous addition. So I, the subcommittee, we will be working in the next couple of weeks to put together a draft survey that we will use, we will give to administrators and central office staff, and i-if the board approves this process. And then we will compile the data from those folks, as well as our, our own input. The subcommittee will put together a summative assessment, will bring it to the board, the entire board. The board will have an opportunity for input, and at that point, we'll make revisions and present that to Superintendent Coulter by June thirtieth. And then usually following that meeting, Superintendent Coulter will, will sit down and have a meeting either with the subcommittee or the full board. It could be his choice, it could be our choice, to just discuss that assessment. And that's pretty much the process we've been using over the last few years with the addition of using a survey to get feedback. So, does that sound pretty good?
Very good.
Okay. One, when Howard and I were looking at, we've been doing some sort of, just scheduling to look at the big map of, of the alignment of how we do things, he raised the question of timing. I mean, it currently has these deadlines of May fifteenth and June thirtieth, and we were talking about the possibility of moving that earlier to January fifteenth and February thirtieth. And so that's something that I'm going to ask the subcommittee to consider.
February thirtieth?
That, that the beginning of the process where he would give us, oh, yeah, February. What did I say?
You said February thirtieth.
February thirtieth. So that the process would start in January.
I'm hoping I get a laugh out of someone.
Oh, oh. Was I the only one? You're right. Must have been the twenty-eighth. My notes say the thirtieth, but, thank you. That's good, though. It's a good date to have your evaluation if you're trying to avoid it. So that's something that I'm going to suggest that we talk about in the subcommittee, and we think about the timeliness, does it make sense to provide that assessment earlier in the year? It would fit with our schedule of goal-setting and all of that, so, okay. Policies. We have four policies that we read last week, and we're ready to recommend to adopt. Is there a motion to move to adopt?
Them in a block.
You want to do them in a block? So, policy EHC, Calendar of Events, IMAH, Health Education, Daily Physical Activity, JJJ, Interscholastic Athletics, JLCA, Physical Examinations of Students.
And to delete EHC-R?
And to delete?
Yeah, ICCR.
Oh, it's on the back here? To delete EHC-R. Okay. So that's the motion, seconded by David. We read and talked about these. Any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Okay. Academic development? There's nothing this evening, unless something has come on since this agenda was made?
No, we'll discuss a matter in non-public personnel.
Okay. Operations management? We're all set?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to superintendents' reports and recommendations.
Thank you very much. The first thing that I will put on this evening is, is a response to your request for more information regarding ways that we, in each of our schools, are working toward soliciting additional student feedback, and then using that information to make refinements and improvements as, as we see appropriate. And I believe this is one of your, one of your specific goals for the school districts, and so this is an attempt to give you an update on efforts being made to address that goal. I've asked each of the four principals to give us feedback on, again, those efforts to solicit additional information from students, and so I'll give you a report by school, if you don't mind. So, regarding Mastway, what I have, have learned is that some, not all, third and fourth-grade teachers have asked students this year to fill out a self-assessment survey that includes items about how each student learns best. And my impression is that that information will, will follow the student, and that other teachers in the future will be able to have that information to use in, in terms of their planning units of instruction, and adjusting some of that toward different learning styles. And I'm, I don't know if this, in time, will be something that will be expected for all teachers in grades three and four, or not, but I just know that this year, it is something that many teachers volunteer to do. And that information, again, I'm hoping and expect will be shared with future teachers. Mr. Mishu also pointed out that there are certainly a number of additional ways that the school goes about soliciting feedback from students, most of which is informal. And that's certainly valuable information, but I don't have examples of, of, of the ways that that is done. I certainly can, over time, ask for more specifics about that. I, I'm sure that what is, to me, interesting and somewhat perhaps challenging is how do we gain useful, accurate feedback from students at, at each grade level? And it's, I, I think that there's no doubt that there is, that we can learn a lot from even our, our youngest children. There's just no doubt about that. And I think that we have to keep asking ourselves, what, what can we ask? Or, or maybe also, how can we ask that information? And to try and gather that over a long period of time, and, and wonder what we see in terms of common threads and information, and, and ponder that. So, that's what I heard from Mastway Elementary. Regarding Moore Hermann Elementary School, I, I, I learned that, and I think that this is a longstanding tradition, by the way. This is not a new initiative, but there is what's called the fourth-grade interviews, which I believe that students, one-on-one, meet with their principal, their for, during their fourth-grade year, and reflect on the five years they've been there, assuming they've, they started in kindergarten, and talk about what they want to share with the principal, talk about, I believe, academics to include their reading program, how, how do they feel about reading? And, and, and this information is, I believe, even taped, and students receive perhaps this.
Each family receives a copy of that.
Right. Now, I don't know if that information is then categorized. I, I, I don't know if there are certain questions that are asked of all students, and somehow that ends up being logged and, and recorded. I, I would like to know that, but I, I don't know. And it's a question I, I will, I will ask Mr. Harrington. I also know that he mentioned that there are regular meetings with students over numerous issues and accomplishments, and that he ends up oftentimes writing a letter, he will write a letter of congratulations for any, any number of accomplishments by individual or groups of students. So, as you can see, at both elementary schools, there is still a good amount of informal feedback that's, that's solicited, but it isn't anything that I would say is yet established in terms of being comprehensive, and we need to keep working toward that. But, but that's what I, I learned. Regarding the, the middle school, I heard from Ms. Ross that there were a number of things that are going on this year. I think some of them are, are in fact, are longstanding, and others are, are new. They include the school's willingness this year and interest in having students complete what's called a MY Survey. I think you heard about that earlier, which is statewide initiative, asking students to give feedback to the school about a wide range of things, to include school, climate and safety, and respect, so forth. That, she mentioned to me that students in grades six and eight, six through eight, were invited to be involved in the survey, that there are follow-up and interpretive meetings being sponsored by the state, and that school personnel will be attending those workshops as long, as well as, I believe that Mr. Zornowski is also attending those with both the high school and middle school, because they also, as you may know, took the same survey, or it's a similar survey. I also learned that there are follow-up questions for students, and that the school will be having meetings with faculty and students to discuss the results and what to make of the results. Another example at the middle school is that plans are in place to work with seventh-graders in developing a school-wide theme for next school year, and the students are giving a lot of thought and, are certainly involved in that planning. I guess that we're talking about next year's eighth graders, this year's seventh graders. Another example at the middle school is that students are being asked to help plan and implement a summer seminar for interested students. I don't know the details of that, but I, I think it sounds extremely intriguing. I love the idea of summer opportunities for students, and I am a big fan of seminars, so the combination has my certain, my, my interest in. I'm enthusiastic about, about this, if I understand exactly where it's headed. So that, that sounds pretty good. I'm very happy to hear that. Another example at the middle school is that students will have a role in developing the school's schedule for two thousand seven and eight. I also love to hear that. If I understand it correctly, this means that students are going to really be involved in thinking about the way that the day works and, and, and designing perhaps the schedule in some detail, which seems appropriate to me. So, congratulations to the middle school, that those are some sizable efforts, I think. Regarding the high school, I, I heard from Laura Rogers that there were a number of things going on this year as well at the high school. One is, has been to establish or, or to re-establish, in some cases, student committees, and examples of those include the student senate, in terms of expanded responsibilities and functions that, that they will be involved in. Again, the past number of years, or several years, it's been very limited and not too dynamic in terms of responsibility. I think that the, the, the hope now is to have students have a, a larger voice and, and involvement in school-wide decisions. That's wonderful to hear. Another example would be the Oyster River High School Athletic Council. I believe that that is up and running, and I believe that is primarily students. Another example is the Oyster River Athletic Advisory Team, and I believe this is a group that's been started this year, or maybe it's just been reorganized, to include, I believe, students and parents and coaches, a kind of a comprehensive group to kind of give feedback to the athletic director. That's, that's great to hear about. As I mentioned earlier, the high school is involved in the MY, MY Voice survey, and the results are being discussed with the faculty and, and, and also students. There will be student-focused groups that will be discussing the feedback, the results of, of the survey as well. Third example of feedback from the high school is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and that will be administered this spring to students, and I, I'm anticipating the results of that will be made public and shared with faculty and students, and we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that. A fourth example is that each Monday of this year, Principal Rogers has been having lunch meetings with the senior executive council, the junior class president, and other students as interested. So, that, again, I find very appealing, and I think we heard the last meeting that Principal Laura Rogers is asking students to, who are on these committees, to come, but also just to bring a friend. I, I love that. I mean, the friend may not be on council, and they may have a different view, and we want to hear from everybody, so, good, good for her. And also, I'll mention that last year, members of the social studies department surveyed students about their classes, their classes meaning social studies classes. And that this effort from teachers to solicit response from students about their classes is, first of all, certainly commendable, and it is, is, is something that is being encouraged by the administration across all departments. And in time, perhaps, we'll see more of that, but she wanted to note, to have you realize that there, a, a, a department on their own went about this last year.
Which department, say it again?
Social Studies. So that's the information I have to date, and I hope that perhaps we could keep this as a, an annual, no, don't lose sight of this, no, maybe somehow, if you agree, we'll make note of a proper time, and each year, keep asking for more examples, so that it's not something that we feel is a flash in the pan, that we're really serious about this, and we want to keep giving it our full attention.
Questions or comments? David?
I have to admit, as you're going through this list, many of them sound like, like very good things, and I, I want to support them. Until you, you mentioned the last one about the social studies, though. It seemed that, again, this year, we sort of missed the mark, as I thought we were. I think, in my understanding of the, the goal, it really is to try and come up with specific mechanisms for each teacher to get feedback from their students. In some of these, sort of indirectly.
Right.
It's more, you know, how do you feel about the community, or do the school, or the culture, which is obviously established and communicated to students through the teachers? But it, I think when you get that indirection, you also water it down, and you make it harder to, so, I would, I encourage, I, I agree with you, we need to keep focus on this, but I encourage you to sort of stress that point, and, and use that last example as, that, that's where we want to go. I know in the middle school, there was a, another example, a couple of years ago, I think when we first started on this feedback, that the administration asked the middle school teachers to come up, I think, with three adjectives that they wanted students to describe them as, I don't know if I'm remembering this correctly.
That's correct.
And so, at the beginning of the year, each teacher said, you know, these are the three adjectives, and then they asked students, I believe, throughout the year, you know, how would you describe me? you describe me? And they then said, well, how would I get teacher, get my students to describe? So, that's, I mean, that's a kind of mechanism that sort of has that feedback into it without necessarily saying, you know, fill out this survey, you know, did you like my classes or my, you know, which I think people look at. So, that's the kind of feedback, it's direct between a teacher and a student. And again, the real ultimate goal of that is to improve instruction by getting kids' voices into the teachers, thinking about how they're doing, are they reaching the kids? So, we'll keep at it.
Right, we will. May I respond? I think that, I'm in complete agreement that our ultimate goal is for teachers to feel comfortable in asking students for feedback and for that information to be used correctly in terms of just refinement. I think that that sounds exactly right. I think that this is more complicated than meets the eye. And in part because I think, for one, it's not the norm. And I think, for another, there is always some concern about, well, is this information, how is it going to be used? Is it going to be used constructively? Is it going to be used punitively? Is it going to become part of my evaluation? Is it going to be shared publicly? I mean, there are all these questions that I think we need to answer. And I think that it's fair to say that the answer, I believe you would agree with me, the answer here is that it's meant to be used privately and in a supportive, constructive way, it's not meant to be part of a evaluation unless historically there is evidence that there is something that deserves attention. And then it only adds to the concern and to hopefully one's agreement that there's something here to work on. And I think that, but it's not meant to be a side door effort to evaluate or make big judgment about any teacher. It's meant to be constructive and useful. So, I think that if we can stress that and reassure people, that's the larger goal here, that would be helpful. But then there becomes the question of, well, how do we go about this? I mean, is it the beginning of the year, is it the end of the year? What kind of questions are appropriate? What are we trying to get at? Is this anonymous or do we require students to sign this? Is it going to be seen by me or my principal or my superintendent? I mean, how far does this go? I mean, there's just so many details to work through. I think that we can answer all those questions, but to answer them all and to start working toward this will take some time. I worked in a school district for a long time where one thing we did with probationary teachers every year for the first three years that they worked for us, and then for teachers on continuing contract, every third year, not every, in other words, once within their every three-year cycle, was that we would send out a random questionnaire to parents and ask them questions about the teachers' teaching. Were they engaging, from the parent's perspective, was the teacher engaging, was the teacher responding to individual requests, were they getting, were there comments and to students on time and helpful? Just some basic but good questions. And I would say that it had a lot of positive impact for teachers. And it also gave them some real sense of how others are seeing their works. So, the reason I mention this is that I've seen it work in a very constructive way over a long period of time. The beauty of it, we're doing it with your probationary teachers, is that after three years, they were used to it. It wasn't some startling, well, where is this coming from? You know, why are we doing this? They had used it three years in a row, assuming they stayed with us for three years. They saw that it was helpful. And after that, it was a familiar experience. And that's one thing I've thought about that maybe we want to think about as well, is starting to think about this being part of what we do in terms of looking at our probationary teachers, to be thinking about feedback from parents. I think that it isn't, in other words, if we do this, it has to be seen as just one slice of the pie. You don't overestimate that feedback, but you also recognize that they have got a lot of opinions that, you know, if there's a trend there, it's worth noting. And by and large, there's a lot of valuable information that comes in. So, I think that it's a change that we have to, if we want to work in this direction, it's a multiple-year project. I appreciate that you could be a bit disappointed that we haven't made more gains this year. I think that one thing I can share with you that we can feel good about that's related to this is that this year, all of our principals have voluntarily signed up for receiving feedback from their faculty. And that's commendable. And we have come up with a form that we don't feel necessarily is worth being published, but it's a good start. And we can refine the questionnaire over time. But teachers will be giving feedback to their principals, and we think that it'll be helpful to the principals, but we also hope that it helps teachers realize that we believe in this and that we, and that if it's good for some, it may be good for all. I think that it's just going to take some time. We can make some more gains next year. I think that one thing we could do is think more about asking people to voluntarily do this and work with us on what it would look like by grade level or by groupings of grades. And then perhaps just say, this is what we are going to do with probationary teachers. And ask others to join in, and maybe over time, we just keep moving more and more toward this as the norm. I think, again, if people could see other people using it and how it's being, how it really can be very helpful and constructive, it'll take away a lot of the apprehension. And it would be lovely to see people just saying, you know what, I want to do this, as opposed to saying, now here this, a directive from the central office, you will be asking for feedback. I mean, that doesn't, it's not the way we want to do it.
David?
On some of the issues you raised, the school board has discussed in the past, you know, will it be public, will it be part of evaluation? Will other people see it? And realizing that that is a sensitive issue, we've, as I understand, we're unanimous in saying that this will not be part of evaluations, it will not be public.
That's great.
It's really between the teacher and the student. The key thing is we want them to seek feedback from the students so that they can improve their instructional practice. And that's one reason why we've said we've kept it open, you know, tell us how you want to do that, so that you find what works for you and what's comfortable for you, so.
Well, I'm sure that would be very reassuring to teachers and principals.
Just to add two brief points. One, just really a question is, do teachers need support on how to do this? And we might think about that. I mean, this has been a goal for a couple of years, and I think they're moving some faster than others, but, I mean, I wonder if this is the kind of thing where it's useful to have somebody from another school district who has worked trying to help teachers think about different ways of getting feedback from students and then what to do with the data. Because you're right, it is very complicated and there's a lot of layers, a lot of questions to be asked. So, I just, I throw that out there. It might be worthwhile asking administrators if it would be useful to have someone come in and work with faculty around that question. And then the second point that I'd like to make, just, is really a comment about, I agree that there are a lot of good things on this list, but I want to put out a caution, and that is, to the extent that feedback is kind of spotty, you know, we'll have a committee here or we'll do it through this, unless it casts a wide net, it actually can give us data that might help us get a false picture of our schools. I mean, I think when, in the principal at MoHaramit, when Dennis interviews the entire fourth grade, he's casting a big net, so he's seeing that whole range. And I think it is a good question of, what do you do with that data? You know, how does he then use, work with that data to have it become part of how he thinks about working with teachers to shape program? I think, you know, and there are a number of things on here that seem to cast a wide net. But when we start, you know, if we rely too much on, let's say, a student's, the student's senate or any small group here or there, we're beginning to get, we may think we're getting feedback, but what we may be getting is only a skewed vision of the school. So, I would just want to, as we continue to talk with administrators, to encourage them to be thoughtful about making sure that all voices are being represented and to the extent that we can find, they can find strategies for feedback that cast that wide net, I think that would be useful.
May I respond?
Mm-hmm.
To your question, can we use help? I think that it's fair, I guess, before others, absolutely we can use help. And perhaps we are going to, we need to form a committee of teachers and administrators and some others who have expertise in this field to sit down and help us think about this. It isn't going to come together without a lot of concentration and commitment. I mean, there is so much going on right now, there are so many committees and different efforts that are in motion. It's going to require this becoming one of, on a very short list of priorities. And I think what you're saying is that that's what you are asking for. I mean, you want this to be a top concern, a top issue to address, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I think, you know, my suggestion that we may look outside the organization for support.
Right.
I would fully expect that we would create a made-for-this-district approach, not, I'm not looking to import something. But I do think people, you know, to bring in someone with experience who can help us through that process of what it may look like is valuable, yes.
But we already might have those types of skills in the social studies department. If they've already jumped ahead and kind of put their neck on the line to make improvements at a fairly high-risk level, or perceived high risk, not really high risk, but perceived high risk, then I think it's always good to.
Yep.
Stay in-house and tap that talent, because that is tailor-made for us.
Right. Well, and it may be a combination. I mean, what I hear Howard say is that it may be a committee of our people and someone helping them begin to shape their work.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Tom?
I had one thing, if I may, to just add to this. I just wanted to provide you some information about the My Voice student survey. The survey was administered in November. We received the results back in late December in a first meeting. And so, the schools have that and they've been working with that information. If, in fact, the interpretive workshops are not forthcoming in a timely manner and I have no schedule for that yet, I'm going to provide you the raw data. I mean, I'd like to provide you with the entire package, but we've been waiting. And I might provide you the raw data and the interpretive as it occurs, because I don't want to give you that information next year for a survey that took place this year.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I would welcome seeing data. In fact, it's.
I mean, we anticipate that our first real interpretive workshop will be relatively soon, but if it isn't forthcoming, I mean, there's supposed to be four, four major areas. But if it isn't forthcoming very soon, I mean, the principals have been working with this, with the staff, and I'm just going to provide you the raw data and not be able to interpret, assist you with interpretive information.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. If you want to move on to item B, school costs not covered by.
Yes.
Operating budget.
Thank you. Last, I guess it was October, during our early chapters of the budget development process, I believe that you had asked for feedback from us as to, a report as to what expenses are parents asked to pay out of pocket for their children's education that would exceed the money that is in our operating budget for supplies, services, programs, activities and so forth. And again, I asked principals for feedback, for a response to that question, and if I can, I'll give you what I've heard. It's not complete, but it's what I've heard, again, by school. So, here's what I heard from Mr. Mishu at Mastway. He said that field trips are the only times that parents are asked for additional money at Mastway. And that for first grade, I don't believe that kindergarten children go on field trips, and it's really all about field trips. And the first-grade children, on average, are going to be asked to pay, the parents will be paying around twenty-five dollars per year per child for field trips. And that for grades two and three, it jumps to fifty dollars per year per child. He also wanted me to point out to you that scholarships are available and certainly handled discreetly for anyone that might need support, to include full support for any of these expenses. So, that's what I heard. I did not receive a response from Mr. Harrington at MoHaramit, so I don't, I'm sorry.
No, can I, I think you have to pay for the instruments, too.
Okay.
If you take music.
If you do instrumentals.
If you do instrumental.
That's additional, right.
So, wouldn't that count? I mean, that's one of the things that I'm thinking we want to be looking for.
Right. And I'm just reporting what I heard. I, so that's a good point. So, it should, we should be thinking about musical instruments. In other words, the rental, is that right?
That's substantially more than twenty-five or fifty dollars a year, maybe a month. I know, I know, I'm paying twenty-six dollars a month for a joint.
The difference is that, I mean, not, I'm not saying either or whether it should be, but with a field trip, the entire class goes. With instrumentals, kids choose to do instruments.
Oh, absolutely.
But still, you know, that's, maybe that's something you don't want to, right.
But with the instrumental, there's two different, there's the renting of the instrument and then lessons. And I think there are.
Lessons are provided.
Lessons taught in the school.
Group lessons.
Group lessons, right. So, it's really the renting of the instrument is the big expense.
So, I can try and get back to you with what that would be as well, mention that. I'm sorry.
Then again, as you said, I don't think that that, I don't know if that's apples to oranges, really, because that is a voluntary.
It is co-curricular, yeah.
Yeah, it is co-curricular and it really is a voluntary kind of thing, as opposed to the field trips, which are, I mean, you could say they're voluntary, but they're not really, so.
Right. No, I think you're right, teachers incorporate, the field trip is part of their curriculum, so.
Right.
It becomes the method through which they're teaching their curriculum.
Right, and I'm guessing that's why it wasn't on the list, because it's an elective offering. Regarding the middle school, it's been broken down for me by Ms. Ross, by grade level. And for grade five, it includes the environmental school, the exchange city, science center, fish hatchery, Freedom Trail, Newcastle Trip, and movies. I could give you the cost per each, but the total is one hundred and forty-five dollars per child. For grade six, it would be Camp Lincoln, skating, I believe this is at UNH, plays and movies, hikes, and baseball day. And the total for grade six is seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents per child per year. Grade seven, am I going too fast? Yeah, okay. Per team, which I guess that students pay an amount of money for the team they're on, and it's twenty-five dollars and that covers everything. Sounds like they don't do the same kind of activities in grade seven. So, that's a twenty-five dollar cost per year per child. And then we, for grade eight, have films, the Boston Trip, a play, and a marine trip. And the cost to. And the cost to, for that, for eighth-grade year, is thirty-three dollars and fifty cents per child, per year. So those are this year's rates, and I can't speak about inflation, but that's, that's her response. And then, I'm sorry.
But before, we also have an instrumental program at the middle school. So I assume the same thing applies there, the kids who participate in that program also have
Are still renting.
Renting.
And I mentioned the high school, too?
Right. Now, also at the middle school, there are athletic programs. Do the kids have fees to participate in those?
I, I, I just don't know.
Maybe equipment fees, or, I don't know of anything.
I, I don't know of anything either.
I don't think they do.
I don't think so.
I don't think they're paying a bill for that, yeah. I know they cost money.
There are no fees in middle school, but when you get to high school, certain
Right.
Sports have
have a cost.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if there's any other extracurricular activities, like, I know they have a drama club, they have, I don't know, I don't know of any fees for any of those.
See, I'm thinking that we need to maybe separate out, not that we don't want to report all of it, but maybe we need to say, these are the things that, as you, as you said earlier, these are part of the, of the curriculum, of the program. And the other options to, which are valuable, to include music and drama and athletics or whatever else, that's elective. And, but oftentimes, there's a tremendous cost attached. And I, I, I'm guessing that part of your concern is, does that cost keep some children or some families from full participation? Because they just simply can't come up with that.
David?
There was also, I think that what originally started this line of thought was when we presented the track plan to the high school, there was a comment that the journalism class had to raise, I believe it was six hundred dollars to print the paper, even though that was a class, but it was kind of a co-curricular activity associated with that class. And there was some question of fairness, you know, why should we spend
Right.
two and a half million dollars for an athletic field when we can't get six hundred dollars to pay for a paper? And that was the first time I had heard of that, that issue. And so it was sort of the question, well, were all these other lingering issues out there? And until you really gather them all and understand them, I mean, I agree, you need to make a decision. You know, certain things that go in the classroom, clearly we should pay, co-curricular, co-curricular stuff, we pay for some of it, extracurricular, you know.
Right.
There's a reasonable judgment on what people should pay, but until you understand what, what is being paid, it's hard to make those kinds of judgments. So that was my, my impetus in this, is that, you know, let's, let's inventory what is happening, and then we can start making decisions about what's appropriate.
Well, I, I don't have a, a report for you from the high school, and it's, it's really because it's more complicated than meets the eye. I, I, I sent an email tonight to Laura Rogers, asking for that as soon as possible. I, I made the request, she had mentioned to me that it's, it's gonna require some time to go really by department. I, I believe that some departments ask students to pay for lab fees or for certain calculators, and I, I don't know what else. And that there's the entire athletic costs, which again, will be provided by Mr., the athletic director, Mr. Maynard, as Mr. Zornowski just mentioned. So, and then, then there are all these trips that, see, we, we have to try and decide which trips are part of the curriculum, separate those out from the trips that are elective. For example, a trip to France for the French class, I'm, I'm imagining is not a requirement. But there are other trips, perhaps, to other places that are absolutely required for, example, for a science class to go to a, a, a marsh, as an example. So it's gonna, it's gonna be, I think, a much more detailed and somewhat probably impressive list for you to see at the high school. I just wanna reassure you that we'll have it for you soon. And it's my understanding that the high school is working on gathering the data right now, but I don't have it tonight.
David?
You mentioned a calculator. I believe that middle school also at least recommends a calculator at some point.
Correct.
Remember, you've talked about running calculators every year.
Correct.
Which is a hundred bucks?
A hundred bucks.
Right. And I don't know what grade that fits in, or whether that can be used for multiple years in the middle school. I know, I've, I've had
It depends whether, it depends whether it's a unified calculator or not, or whether the, the teacher chooses to use a different calculator.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So I've, I've got, I've got that on the list of questions. Obviously, neither of these reports are complete, but it's what I have to date.
That's great.
Mr. Coulter, do you know, do, do teachers have a budget for field trips? Do we at a district level say that each teacher has in his or her budget two hundred dollars for
I don't really, I, we do for supplies, I, I would think, don't we? There, there's a, there's a formula that's, Mr. Cox is gonna be the edge, the best information.
Yeah, for some supplies, textbooks is a per pupil amount that's put in for each school. But for what you're talking about, there's no
So we don't budget anything, for instance, for buses, like, the cost often, the costs associated with these field trips usually include transportation, as well as the cost to get into a museum, for instance.
Right. There, there are a couple things that, like the environmental camp, that we do budget for. But for general class trips, no, we don't have any transportation money budgeted for those.
Okay, so part of that expense gets pushed onto the parent?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just kind of even thinking in terms of if teachers were, knew that they had the transport, you know, a certain transportation budget. I mean, I, and I'm sure tri, field trips vary year to year. Like, right now, there's the Darwin exhibit at the Boston Science Museum, and that may cause certain science group to wanna go there, whereas they don't normally. But, okay, so we don't, all right. Just something to think about is, David?
As I understand it, the principals basically have a lot of discretion, and they work with the teachers to make sure that the field trips are educationally appropriate and that they balance between them. But that's really, I think, done at the building level, is from my experience.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent Coulter's gonna review the renomination process
Oh, yes, thank you.
for professional staff.
Well, if you don't mind, I would just like to take a second, and, or not more than a second, really, and just talk about a proposal I have that, for you regarding the process that we might follow in the serious work of nominating and, and electing teachers. What I'm thinking, talking about now, is really about people who are already on staff. They're currently, they're current employees, not people who we would be recommending for the first time to hire. But people, it's about rehiring personnel. And my understanding is that, at least for, for the last several years, the school board has met in non-public session with the principals, and the principals would go over each and every probationary teacher and answer questions, if there were any, as part of the process. And I understand, I, I believe I understand your thinking, which is that you want to be informed, you, it's a very serious role that you play, and you feel some responsibility to, to be making good decisions and, and not just go along with a recommendation without the confidence that it's been thorough and that you know what you need to know. What, what I am suggesting is that that step be removed from the board level, and it really takes place at the level of where the principals meet with, with me, the superintendent. And I, I, I think that's a more appropriate place, quite, with all due respect, for discussion and detail about probationary teachers. My, my, my recommendation is that principals, in, prior to meeting with me in, in private and, and with the assistant superintendent, that they spend considerable time working with, observing, and coaching and supporting their probationary teachers. And that, that leads, over time, starting in September and ending perhaps in February or March, in time for, for the deadlines that we, we must meet in April, them coming up with a, a summary, a summative report. And that the, the teacher knows clearly where things stand. They, they know what the principal believes are their strengths. The principal knows what he or she feels are areas for growth. And the teacher knows if the principal supports or does not support a recommendation to me that I nominate the person to the board. And what we're doing this year is we have a form that is new this year. And it's a form that is really a one-page, it could be two, but so far, they've all been one-page, simply pointing out those basic questions and issues in terms of where, what do you, as a principal, consider to be this teacher's strengths as a teacher? And what do you consider to be the areas for, for improvement? In a bullet format. And so that when I sit down with the principal and with Mr. Zornowski, the principal, one teacher at a time, goes over this list, and I see that this, and, and in an outlined form, it's been signed by the principal, and it's been checked off and signed, checked off in terms of do they or do they not recommend them being renominated? And the teacher also signs off on it. So it's clear that they understand where they stand and what the principal feels about them as teachers. That's really backed up by all the reports up to that point that have been done formally and formally by the principal and working with the teacher. And then I will ask, and I have asked, the principals that I've met with so far this year, do you, would you be happy to think this teacher would be with us ten years from now? Would that, would that please you? And I ask the question, do you consider this teacher to be as strong or stronger than the average teacher in your building? And if they can't say yes to both of those, I have great concern. If they're on the fence, I have great concern. I ask them if they think that, that, that these teachers are, that, that we're talking about are, are dedicated, are hardworking, are knowledgeable, are people who are willing to learn and grow as teachers? All those things are asked. And I, I then factor that in. I don't feel any obligation to support that recommendation. I mean, it's just a recommendation, though I take it very seriously. But I have told principals, I will reserve the right to not agree with their recommendation. If I'm not convinced that this is somebody that I want to be, that I will be proud of in terms of a hire on my watch, I will not go forward with, with this, as simply a recommendation. I think that would be unlikely, but it can happen, and for me, it has happened. So I would then, following the order of this, would then come to a meeting of the board, and we would go in the non-public. And without the principals giving you a report, because they've given me the report, I then will provide you with a slate of people that I would like to nominate. And you have every right to accept or, or reject anyone on that list. I mean, if you aren't comfortable with a name that you see there, you simply take it off. That, 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 that's your responsibility to feel that you are not rubber-stamping anything. If, I think that more often than not, you're going to, if you believe in the process and if you believe in the people that are doing the evaluation, then I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna imagine that, as you probably always, most often have or always have, you're gonna, you're gonna go along and agree with that. But I, I want it to be clear, you're gonna know, I, I think that you have to have the, 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 the right, and, and you do have the responsibility to say no, if, if you're uncomfortable. I would have with me the sheets I referred to earlier, so that if, if I, if I was asked specific questions, I would do my best working off the sheets that I'm receiving from principals when we meet, to say, well, here's what I have for you, here's what I've heard, and here's what I know. I would not have all the backup material. If there was a teacher, I guess, that you felt you really needed to hear more about, I guess what you could do would be to remove that name, take no action, and then request to ask, to talk more about that person at a future meeting, my impression is that the, the teacher in question should, should know that you're meeting and have the right to be present. And I would bring the principal to the meeting, and we would, we would talk. But it wouldn't be, the risk in this is that you could get overly involved in this. And I'm trying to keep you appropriately involved, but not involved in what should be my work. And it really, for probationary teachers, it's not about a non-renewal. They're hired for one year at a time. The question is, do we wanna bring them back or not? And I can assure you, I, 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 I take this responsibility very seriously. I think it's one of the most, it may be the most important thing that I do, other than be sure that schools are safe for the children and teachers. And I think it has more opportunity to bring about continued growth for Oyster River. Right, this, this job right here of hiring teachers than anything we do. So I, 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 I wanna reassure you that I share your seriousness for this, for, for this work. But I, I, I think that there needs to be perhaps a, a division and responsibility here. And if we find over time that bad decisions are being made, we have to either question the process that we're using to evaluate, or the people that are doing the evaluation. It's, it's, it's one or both of those. My impression is that, in general, you've had a lot of success here in, in hiring. I'm in no way suggesting that we need to change because there's a problem. I just think that I wanna be able to ask the hard questions privately, and, and then be able to make my decision at, at that point, after sleeping on it. Then I have some of that happen here with the board, and the board getting involved in things that probably you don't wanna be involved in, or shouldn't be involved in. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. I've outlined this to the principals, I believe it's fair to say that they all feel supportive of the proposal. I, I think that they would, would find that to be, from their point of view, I believe they, they might say that that, it's an improvement. I, I, I wouldn't wanna quote them, but I think that, I, I didn't hear anyone say, gee, I don't like that idea. And that's all, I can assure that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Kim?
I have a question. Being that you've, you've seen other districts and worked with other districts, and we, you know our policy, is, it sounds like you've got a compilation of, of policies that you've seen and you've liked? Or is this a common practice in other, wondering how we stand against other districts for this particular practice?
Well, I've seen districts go about this in a number of ways. I, I actually, I've seen one district actually bring the teachers in one by one. So there's a long row of them outside waiting, and they would announce your name, and you come down, and the teacher sits here, and I think oftentimes feels intimidated and embarrassed, and, and the principal is there talking in detail about the teacher, and the board is talking about, and the teacher's sitting here, but people are talking about her or him. It's very bizarre. So I've experienced that, that didn't last long. And, and
He had no teachers left, didn't he?
I, 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 I have seen principals come in and go over the list of their teachers before. I think sometimes the risk in that is that questions are at, principals can be very nervous about that, and there's a tendency to wanna make everybody happy. And, and not be as candid as they might be, because they don't know how confidential it is, or what, 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 what this might mean. And I, I think the principal And I, I think principals will do, if they're asked to do that, they'll do that. But I, but, but getting back to your question, I've seen that. Where principals, pretty much what, what I think you do here, they, they come in and they talk about their teachers. But I, what I want you to know is that I want to have extremely candid conversations, ask hard questions. And I, I, again, I think that Mr. Zornowski can attest to this. I've met with two principals so far. Again, Mr. Zornowski was president for both of those. I, I have asked for more information. In some cases, I've asked people to go back and, and come back with more. I want, I'm not satisfied that I know enough. I, I, I found it to be so far useful. I, I've learned a lot about the teachers. I, I think that people are, understand and agree with, with my threshold for nominating a teacher. I, no one has said that they don't agree with that. So I guess, I, I like being able to have those discussions. And maybe in some cases, maybe two or three, if I need them, to be confident. If, if it isn't obvious to me, I'm through. I, it needs to be extremely clear to me that this is absolutely somebody that we would be so pleased to be here because they're that good, they're that child-focused, and they're going to raise the boat.
I'd just like to say, I do like the, the process of asking the really hard questions privately. And I do think that you may be able to get a lot more information than we do in our current process. I did like that aspect.
David?
I, I agree with the last comment, that there are some, you know, peculiar aspects to our current process. It's, in most cases, as you've described it, the principals rate the teachers from very good to great. And it's one of the more difficult aspects on the school board to sort of tease out areas where improvement needs to be done. So if, if this process comes out with more genuine discussion, I think that that is, that would be an improvement. I must admit that that's, this is one of the few times when the board and the principals actually sit down and talk about instruction and teachers, which unfortunately we don't get that much time to talk about. And that's sort of, as you said, I, and I agree wholeheartedly, the selection of staff at the schools is one of, if not the most important thing that we do in terms of making sure that our kids have good, good instruction. What I would recommend is that you try and, and maybe just write a memorandum to the board on what your criteria is, so that it's clear to us what kind of thing. You, you mentioned you want to make sure that every, that the teachers are in the top half of, or above the average for the, so that you're continually making the quality of the overall staff increase. If just, just to write that in some, because basically what you're, you're asking us to do is to put more faith and more accountability in the administration on your judgment and your selection process, which I think is an appropriate thing to look for. But I think we need to make that conversation between the board and the superintendent more explicit on exactly what, what the criteria is for that. So I think having a memorandum that we can have a discussion on and just clarify that. And also have it moving forward as a record for subsequent administrations would be good. So I'm, I'm willing to give it a try.
Any other comments? I, I would just add that I'm also comfortable with the process that you outline. I think it, it, it kind of keeps clear the lines of responsibility, which is a good thing. I also feel like, David, I've always valued the opportunity of that meeting because it is the time that the board and, and administration often talk about learning and teaching, even beyond teachers, you know, talking about teaching and learning. But I, I just want to mention, I think now that we've put in the administration board retreat that will come in the spring, it actually creates an opportunity for perhaps more genuine discussion of that sort of ilk. So we may be missing that, but we're replacing it with another meeting. So that may fill that void a little bit. But, yes, Howard?
Well, I, I would, it would, it would never be my intent, and I'd be sad to think that this change, if we follow this, one of the results of it is that there's less discussion about students and learning and, and, and education. I, I, one thing that we could do would be to think about perhaps having built into our yearly calendar of board meetings, reserving time for just that. So that it's something that, on a whatever, bi-monthly basis, we commit to that being a large part of the meeting. And maybe it could be a report that somewhat also ties into the curriculum review cycle, so that the curriculum that has just been perhaps identified for the review would, would be one of those. I would, I would love us to send some teachers to a national conference on that area of, of our curriculum whenever, each year. So that they would come back, for example, and say, we went to the national math teacher, this is the year of math for our curriculum, and we sent a group of teachers to the national conference. There is one. And they would come back and say, here's what we've heard nationally, these are the concerns, these are the recommendations, these are the priorities, these are some new ideas. And that's in our mind as we're going forward, thinking about what changes we want to make to our math curriculum. That could be one of them. That would be an interesting thing each year to hear from people who are out there doing this work and meeting with other specialists. It would keep us current. And we'd hear something each year. I, I, that's, I mean, that could be built in. We could have, well, tonight, not tonight to keep brainstorming. But I, I mean, my, my point is, I, I think there are ways that we could make it more than an annual event, that we talk about curriculum instruction and, and tie this into several focused discussions each year on, on this.
That's good.
I mean, I think we've started that process when I think, you know, for the last six months, there've been a number of times where we've looked at kind of the, the whole cycle of the year and how does the goal process flow? And what are the sort of ritual meetings that we want to put in? And this may be another, another question, if we look at our school board, the, the content of the meetings over the year, where are the places that we're having these conversations and making sure that we put them in there? That's a great question. We can work on that. Good. And your final, unless you have an other, is process for election of school board chair and vice chair?
Yeah, thank you. I also have an other, if you don't mind. So regarding the process for election, it, it often has seemed to me awkward for there to be the meeting right after election and for people to be nominating other people or maybe even themselves to be chair or vice chair. And sometimes if people feel under some obligation or pressure to, to say yes or, I don't know, it just seems to me that, I've often thought that it might be an improvement to have people say, I, I will at least consider it. Not, not to commit, but to say, I would consider being a chair or a vice chair, at least a meeting prior to that, so that they can think about it, number one, to be sure that they really are willing to do it. But others can, can, can can, who are going to be voting, also give it thought. With, with no intention, obviously, of excluding somebody who wasn't from, being prohibited from being considered at that meeting where you elect. I mean, I think that you've got to reserve that right, that people have a change of, 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 either that they want to run or don't want to run at the next meeting. But if, if we're trying to have, you know, a thoughtful process for, for making this decision, it seems that there's some advantage to at least giving some, you know, early announcement that you're, that you're willing to consider it. That you might just think about that as perhaps an improvement. The other part of it is that, is the term of, of being chair or vice chair. I, I think I, I mentioned to you in my memo, I really support the idea of, of a multiple year commitment, if in fact that works. I mean, things change in people's lives where they can't do that. They, they, and I understand that. But there's really a lot of time spent in learning the job of being chair or vice chair, especially a chair. And, and in fact, to change every year, I think that we lose. Also, there's the relationship that is built between the chair and the superintendent that you, you gain from knowing how the other person works and thinks and operates. If you're, that's changing every year, it can be a bit disruptive. So for, for a variety of reasons, I would recommend that if, if people consider thinking about it being a multiple year commitment, if you can.
So thoughts? Do you, Jo?
Well, it makes sense to me. I like it. For both, both aspects of it, right.
Well, this is our meeting, the, the last meeting before, before our election. So at our next board meeting, we will, Howard will open the meeting and the first action will be nomination of chair. And vice chair, they happen separately, or first chair?
Then vice chair.
And then vice chair. So I think maybe what we ought to do is for, if people, if anybody on the board is interested in serving in either of those capacities, to just say it. And I think Howard's comment, it doesn't commit you. I mean, you may, you know, maybe even saying something out loud will get you thinking about it over the next two weeks and you'll come back.
Or scare you out of it.
Yeah. Or not. And, and I also think, I, I am willing to serve as chair again, but I certainly don't have to. So I, I don't feel bad at all if somebody else says that they would like to, to serve as well. I am willing to serve. I have already served for two years. And next year is my last term, unless I choose to, to re-elect, you know, try to be elected again. But I'm, I guess the reason I'm saying actually that I'm willing to share is partly due to this, the two-year piece. The fact that Howard and I have started working this year, I think it might be useful for the board to have that continuity. But it's not necessary. So, I mean, I don't know if other people are interested in.
I think that would be extremely useful, that you, that you maintain the two-year continuity.
Well, we can have that discussion next meeting. I, I don't want to get into, because we will have a different board. Peter, you're going to...
I'd just like to say, and I think it's a great idea, but I think you've done such a commendable job.
Oh, thanks.
We would all be very disappointed if you weren't the chairman next.
Well, that, we'll have a new board, so.
That's right.
The new board gets to decide. But thank you, thank you. And Shirley obviously isn't here, so hopefully Shirley will watch at some point and, well, she has the backup, she knows.
Right.
And David?
I've served as vice chair. This is my third year as vice chair. I think there was a period in between my first year and the second, last two years. If I am re-elected, I would be willing to consider vice chair again. I certainly enjoy the position, I enjoy the relationship and the, the role of that. My job, which, you know, is supposed to be a two-year job, whatever, is now going to four, into the fifth year and may probably go for another year or two beyond that, I work down in Lowell. It makes it very difficult for me to come up for, you know, special activities or public things of that sort. So I, it's not practical for me to be chair. And one of the roles in some sense of the vice chair is to sort of learn the ropes so that you can become a chair someday. So it might be reasonable, if any of you are interested in maybe someday becoming a chair, if you're interested in that, you might consider being vice chair this year. Like I said, I'd be happy to do it again if I'm re-elected. But the transition's not likely to work there. So in terms of the board going forward, it might make sense for someone else to consider that role. So again, you don't have to make decisions. But if you're, if it piques some interest, think about it. And, and maybe if you come up with something, maybe tell Howard or Joanne or somebody else in the meantime. Obviously, if I'm not elected, then it's an easy one.
Make sure you come at the next, to the next meeting. Or you may be elected chair without, vice chair without. There must be a bylaw that says we can't do that.
And be on time.
On time, right.
Bylaw that we can't re-elect David?
Well, we definitely can't re-elect him if he's not elected on the board.
I can't write him in?
Any, anyone else want to?
Could I just ask one more, one more thought? Your thought with the two-year stint, is that, that's not necessarily a minimum? Sorry, that's not necessarily a maximum?
That's right.
That would just be?
A minimum.
You'd gain, you'd gain the
Right.
Relationship learning time, so that you could effectively work better.
Right.
I, I think that you do want some rotation every few years. A few is, I don't know what, but just to sort of keep fresh ideas and keep things going. But, yeah. I don't think Joanne's anywhere near the few yet.
No, I don't either.
Well, okay. And there is another.
Yes, thank you. I, I received a letter from David Irvin, the director for the Oyster River Middle School Jazz Band. And he is asking, requesting that you approve of two trips, apparently, two overnight trips. One is, let's see. I'm, I am writing to ask permission for two overnight trips that the jazz band hopes to attend. The first overnight trip is to play for the New England League of Middle Schools Spring Conference. The band will play at eight AM in Providence, Rhode Island on Monday, March twenty-sixth. We will be staying overnight at a local middle school in order to arrive at seven AM to set up. So that's the first. The second is a trip to Walt Disney World in Orlando, Florida. We will be attending the workshop on May eighteenth and will be performing on May nineteenth. This will be the fifth time that our jazz band has, has made this trip. And is thanking you for your consideration. What I don't know about, especially the second request, is how many days they would be away? I, I don't, I can't tell you if, if it's...
Is that April?
May, eighteen.
Oh, May.
It's May.
Eighteenth.
They're, they're going to be attending the workshop on the eighteenth of May, and they're going to be performing on the nineteenth of May, but I don't know how many days before and after that.
My son is going. I should know. I believe that they're leaving Thursday after school. And that they will then come back Monday. So they will be, basically miss two days of school and the weekend.
It's a fast trip. So that, that's the answer apparently, is that they would be gone from school three to, two to three days probably on that trip. And the other one, I, I don't know if it'd be gone maybe two days, one to two days. So that, that's the request for you to consider.
Do you, do you want a motion for that? We should, Kim?
I'd like to move that Dave Irvin has these two field trips.
Second?
Seconded.
Stacy.
By Stacy? Is there any discussion?
Question, now, these are done every year, are they not?
Or most every year? I think the Walt Disney trip he does every other year. Though I think the jazz band has been playing at the, the New England Middle School.
They did last year. I don't know if that was, I don't think it's something they've done every year, but I think
Yeah.
It's a recent.
I think Madeline's.
So, and these kids work very hard throughout the entire school year. Those Sunday rehearsals, and I know Dave works hard with them. It's a real accomplishment for them, so. Any further discussion?
The segue's into something that I, I was going to say.
We haven't voted yet, though. So just hold on.
Okay, we'll vote and then I'll...
Okay. So is it pertinent to the vote to accept?
Oh, no, but I want to comment on it.
Okay. All in favor? All in favor? Okay, Stacy?
Well, the reason that I was late tonight is because I was at the MoHaramet Fourth Grade Band Concert. And I'm sure that the, the Mass Way Concert, I don't know if they've had it yet or not, will be just as good. But it is amazing to me that these kids have only been playing since really the first, maybe second week in October. And how really far they've come along. And tonight's concert, they played as a band, but there were a lot of solos and duets and a few trios. And just how much courage it takes to stand up, even though it's your parents, but it's your friends' parents, to play and how well these kids played. And I just think, as a parent of a fourth grader, I'm just incredibly proud that my daughter performed tonight, but also that she has an opportunity to have a music program. And to have a teacher like Mr. B., who has the patience to listen to that practice. And also to the principals, I should say, because it doesn't sound that great when you're in the school. It sounds much better in the... It sounds much better in this beautiful auditorium, but it's a wonderful music program, and we are so fortunate to have it. And those kids work so hard, and so it's really very proud for the parents to be able to see that, and to know that then when they get to the middle school, they can have these kinds of opportunities too, is really, is really wonderful, so.
Yeah, great. And I'd just like to add to that comment, I've, being the secretary of MoHarmat School for five years, and having seen that evolution from when they first opened that box and the clamor in the hall, to this first, I think this is one of the first concerts, your Christmas concert.
Well, they have a Christmas concert, and then this one, and then.
And the spring concert. To see the difference between the kids' performance in those steps is amazing. And again, I'd like to commend Mr. B., Mr. Bartishevitz, for the work that he does, and the passion he has, and he's been doing it for I don't know how long. God bless him, he passes off some really good children to Mr. Irving.
To the middle school.
Not to dislike him at all, but.
So, it is very exciting.
Okay, so is there anything else, Howard?
No, that's it.
Okay. So, moving on to agenda planning, I think at last week's meeting, we agreed to return to the topic of what, are there any questions that the board might ask regularly to parents in order to provide feedback to the district? So, I don't know what, parent feedback. I guess that's the topic, so that's one. We, last week, we also talked about Ann Chapman coming to the board, and also our athletic director, Don Maynard, returning, so that's just on the list. I have my voice survey on the list. I don't know.
We didn't get to this time?
And the policies, well, the policy, yeah, well, there's.
Yeah, we're meeting the 12.
Okay, so we will be looking then, having a first reading of four new policies. Yes?
Who's Ann Chapman?
She's a person who's been working with the district to help.
Oh, she's the lawyer.
She's the lawyer. She's looking at all of our student handbooks and our policy to make sure everything's aligned.
Okay.
And I think Howard felt it might be useful to have her come and meet with the board. Is there anything else? I mean, we will have signing the code of ethics, we'll have our new board, so.
Joanne, I know we have time before we're going to have, when we get to the future meetings, and that we will have time before we get to the three-town meeting that we're going to do in April, but we may.
Want to start discussing that.
Start discussing, you know, questions or agenda for that meeting as well.
Okay. And I think we, I don't believe we've set a date for the administrative retreat, have we?
That would be good, too.
Okay, so probably, I think we intentionally said we were going to hold all that before, after, when the new board comes. And the other, the other thing is that we will have a, we'll set up a meeting for new board orientation, and even though it's possible that we could have as few as one new board member, or as many as two, I just want to share a list of some of the things that I thought would be useful to share with new members, and as I started generating this list, I thought, this is the kind of list that I think would be useful for even board members who have served for a number of years. How does a school district operate? What's the role of the board and the role of the superintendent, and sort of, you know, what is our piece and what is somebody else's piece? How does a vote get taken, you know, just sort of procedural? How do you raise an issue for the agenda? How do things get on the agenda? The importance of confidentiality, maybe some of the, even the laws governing that around use of email, how to deal with concerns and issues that are raised from the community, how to effectively respond to those. So, I mean, that was just a list, and as I started going through, I thought, you know, it would probably be a nice to have a very short meeting, but rather than just having it with whoever the chair is and the new members, if the board's there as a whole, we kind of, it gives the board an opportunity to kind of collectively go over the way we work together. So I've kind of threw that out, I know that's a lot of meetings to be scheduling, but it would be useful, I think, if we could have people there. Okay. Anything else? Okay, so closing actions, we will have a meeting, our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on the 21st of March, sorry, Joseph, that's my son's birthday, and April 4th. And of course, there is Election Day next Tuesday. Voting is in each of the three communities, the high school for Durham, the Lee, the Masway School for Lee, and is it the town hall in Madberry?
Yep.
And I can't, I don't know, the polling times may vary for different communities, so I'm not going to say, but during the day, standard times.
Thank you.
Any other special meetings and activities? There is the High School One Act Play next Thursday on the 15th, and I really encourage members of the community to come out, particularly if you haven't had an opportunity to see something in the auditorium. And also, I think it's a really fabulous way to support these kids, because there's nothing like playing to a large audience, and for these students, this is their rehearsal as they go into the competition. It would be so nice if they had, you know, they had an audience to fill that auditorium, to give them energy. I mean, they really, that would be great, so. Stacy?
Do we already talk about the hockey game?
Ah, no.
I read in the papers, is this correct, the hockey team is playing Spalding on Sunday at 2:15 at the Verizon Center, is it the?
That's correct.
Finals?
Finals.
In the finals, this Sunday.
Which is very exciting. And then also, it's very sad, but the kindergarten packets are now available at your elementary schools.
Sad for parents to say goodbye to their kindergartners, or?
Well, sad that, for some, I'm very happy. I'm a little happy that I was filling out my form today, but some parents may not be as happy that their children, their child is going to kindergarten.
Happy for the district. David?
And there's also a policy meeting we mentioned earlier on Monday.
On the 12.
Okay.
There's also the Senior Citizen Dinner, April 11th, with a snow date of the 12.
Oh, it's April 11th.
Soon spring is coming.
Yes, okay, good. So then.
I wonder if I could mention one thing, too, that you had mentioned, and that is that when you mentioned coming to view the competition for the drama club and group, we instituted a .6 drama teacher in order to be able to, among other things, do things that we hadn't been able to do before, and that is enter state of New Hampshire competitions in drama, and that's precisely what we're doing, so that is a consequence of voters coming and voting for a drama teacher that we didn't have. That's one of the things that we are now able to do, that we were never able to do before, so I just wanted to mention that.
Well, since we're talking about drama, I think at the high school last week, there was a series, a number of English teachers who put together a competition for recitation of poetry, poetry recitation. So there were 16 students who were involved in that. I attended, and it was really lovely to hear, interestingly enough, 13 of the 16, I think, were boys, or 12, stand up and recite poems, all that, all the poems that were selected, they weren't originally written, so there were some pretty challenging poems, and they were wonderfully interpreted. And I know that our new drama teacher was involved in going into some of those English classes and helping coach kids on how to interpret and recite poetry, so it's kind of nice the way that rippled out that way, too. Okay, comments by visitors? No comments, then. Is there a motion to move into non-public session under RSA 91A? Moved by Kim and seconded by David, sorry, Peter, do you want to go on the record as a last?
Yeah.
Peter, seconded by Peter. We're going to let Peter vote, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
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 The Oyster River School Board is now in non-public session, take a one-minute stretch.